Progress.
Hi, welcome to the August 1st Village Buchanan Board Meeting. This evening after the Pledge of Allegiance, we are going to have a moment of silence for a longtime village resident who has passed, George, and everyone knew him as Mo Merritt. And I'm going to ask Bob Wheeler to say a few words. Bob, Mo is in the firehouse, and also Bob is a trustee on the firehouse board. So please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Bob, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I wasn't really that prepared to say anything about Mo, but I don't know if all of you have known Mo or if you've ever met him. He was a very unforgettable person. I met him about 25 years ago for the first time when I became a firehouse. He was a trustee back then. And then I became a trustee right after that with him for a couple of years. He was mentor to me over there. He's been remembered there for 60 years. And there's a long history at the firehouse with a lot of stuff that was done in-house by a lot of these guys back then. And he led that. He was a leader in his own way. You know, the firehouse bought the building next door years ago when the opportunity arose. And he, and I don't know if he's the last guy that was part of that reconstruction and all that project over there, but he was definitely, at the time, the guy that led it all. So, you know, he was a great guy, a great friend, and we'll miss him a lot at the firehouse.
Thanks, Bob. Okay. We don't have any minutes to approve? Comments from the floor, agenda items only? No comments, okay. Under new, oh, I'm sorry.
Agenda items only, like, so.
So, yeah, right now it's any of the items that are on the agenda.
Look at the agenda, okay. Not about, nothing about.
Okay, there's another area to comment to.
Thank you.
So, under new business, I'm going to change this around because we have our engineer on Zoom. So George, George had looked into recreational facilities capital improvement needs assessment. So if you would like to take a few minutes to review that for us?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, trustees. At our last workshop meeting, we talked about needs assessments and what the village has as far as recreational parks. And we took a hard look at all of the parks and the pools and all the assets that the village has, and we looked at their current status and what their needs are as far as repairs, replacements, and whatnot. And we've prepared a few-page memo for you. And basically, in summary, we identified approximately $4.7 million worth of needs, assets, future projects for the recreation department. And we, and we looked at the number of people and the number of households in the village, and we divided that up, and we came up with a cost per household. And we ended up pretty close to where I think the board ended up at the workshop meeting as far as the breakdown per house, per bedroom. And we concurred that the 1,100 for the one-bedroom, the 200 for the two-bedroom, the 1,300 for the two-bed, the 1,400 for the four-bedroom made sense based on all the recreational needs and capital costs for the village over a five-year period.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Oh, that's right, you know, we just got this too today, George. I quickly looked through it, so we haven't had time to.
So George, just to reiterate, it's 1,100, one family for one-bedroom, 1,200, two-bedroom, 1,300, three-bedroom, 1,400, four-bedroom?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's consistent with all the, all the assets that you have, all the projects that, and it's potential projects, it's not just projects that.
Correct.
It's anything that can talk about, anything that could be come down along, down the pipe. And also, we also took a look at what the recreational budget was last year, and it was roughly 429, no, I'm sorry, for 2023, it was 429,000 is what your budget is. And if you break up that per household, it kind of shows you that not only that the number is about right, but you also need grants and other funding to supplement projects moving forward.
Thank you, George.
You're welcome.
You gonna take that resolution now?
Yeah, if you want to.
All right, so we're just gonna take resolu. Okay, because I was gonna have one of the board members read that, but that's okay.
You see the one, the master fee schedule?
Yes.
Because that's what based on what George, yeah, what George did this work behind.
Okay, so would you like to give a little overview of that also, of the resolution we're about to pass?
Well, as George just said, what we're doing is we're amending the master fee schedule. What we're doing is we're indicating exactly what George just said. So per unit is 1,100 for one-bedroom, 1,200 for a two-bedroom, 1,300 for a three-bedroom, and 1,400 for a four-bedroom. And that is both under subdivision and under site plan approval, because if you recall, you put the rec fee in site plan too. So I've indicated under both headings on the fee schedule. And it's based on some of the work George did. Thank you, George.
Yes, thank you, George.
You're welcome.
So the reason why we're doing this is we didn't have a fee, a recreation fee for apartments. We've had recreation fees for subdivisions and individual houses. But moving forward with the development of apartments, it's common to charge a recreation fee for the new people also coming in that will be using all of our facilities. So George did a complete overview of our facilities and what our, like he said, our future needs are, and so that we have a basis of what to charge per unit. So Steve, I'm gonna have everybody read a resolution. Could you read the first?
Okay, Mayor. Village Buchanan Resolution Amending the Master Fee Schedule for the Village Buchanan. Whereas by Local Law Number 9 of 2011, the Village Buchanan established Chapter 90 entitled Fees to the Code of the Village Buchanan permitting the setting of village fees through Board of Trustees Resolutions. And whereas by resolution dated February 7, 2011, the Village Board of Trustees adopted a master fee schedule setting fees for the Village Buchanan. And whereas Section 4 of said local law permits the amendment of the master fee schedule by resolution. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees from time to time reviews the fee schedule to determine if the fees are in accordance with the costs incurred by the village. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees has determined that it is necessary to update the village fee schedule with respect to subdivision and site plan fees in lieu of recreation areas. Now therefore, be it resolved that the master fee schedule shall be amended to add a sliding scale fee under the section entitled Subdivision Plot Application and Section entitled Site Plan Fee in lieu of Recreation Per Unit attached here too. Be it further resolved that clerk is hereby directed to amend the master fee schedule attached here too upon the passage of this resolution.
So I'd like to make a motion to amend the master fee schedule for the Village Buchanan. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the next is, we'll go right back to A. I'm sorry, we went out of order.
George can go, right?
Yeah, George.
Okay, George, good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Take care, George.
So I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing, amending Chapter 181 entitled Taxation to the Code of the Village Buchanan. And Stephanie, if you could give us an overview.
Did you open the public, did they, did everybody?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Okay, so this, what we're doing here is you have a chapter in your code called Taxation, and we're adding an article to Chapter 181. And basically what we're doing is we're allowing folks who find themselves in the situation of being delinquent on their taxes to enter into a repayment installment agreement. And that agreement is for 24 months, four equal payments, 25% of the delinquent tax is paid first. And then in that 24 months, so semi-annually, they'll pay another equal share and get caught up on their taxes. And I think, you know, I think it's good. If people get behind, life circumstances take over. There are also default remedies. As you guys know, so it's really clear in the, in this section of the code that you can do this once, but don't, don't, don't get behind again. You can't enter into an agreement if you're, you know, if you're delinquent on more than one. And so, but Marcus is going to be in this. It gives Marcus the authorization to enter into and sign the agreement. And I think I drafted an agreement, right? Did I send it to you?
Yes.
I don't think you guys have it, but I drafted the agreement which Marcus and the taxpayer would sign. So the code is giving him authorization to enter into the agreement. That's what it does. It allows for a payment plan, people get caught up. Better than tax lien sales, right?
Yeah.
No, we don't do tax lien sales.
Right, I know.
And I think, I think before, several years ago, this is something fairly new with the state. I don't think they allowed anything like this for.
It's been around for a number of years.
Has it?
Yeah, it's just we've never had a request before.
Okay, yeah.
And also, just to put on the record, a penalty interest continues accrual, so there's no free time, there's to continue paying penalty as well. So for the taxpayers who are on time, they're not, nobody getting a free ride. They're paying penalty, continue paying penalty until it's paid in full.
And that's clear in the, in the code. That's been spelled out, so you probably give that to them, to somebody who wanted it.
Absolutely.
Anyway, that's that one.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do, do any of the board members have any comments?
No, I'm good with it.
Anybody from the audience? This, this helps people that get behind, because you never know in life what's gonna happen. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing, amending Chapter 181.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dan is going to read the resolution authorizing the adoption of local law.
So this is Village of Buchanan Resolution Authorizing the Adoption of Local Law Number 4-2023, amending Chapter 181 of the Code of the Village of Buchanan. Whereas a resolution was duly adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan for a public hearing to be held by said Village Board at Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan to hear all interested parties on a proposed local law amending Chapter 181 entitled Taxation to the Code of the Village of Buchanan. And whereas the notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official local newspaper, and whereas said public hearing was duly held at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Village Board on August 1, 2023 at 7:00 PM at the Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan, New York, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the Village Buchanan to adopt said local law. Now be it therefore further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan hereby adopt said local law number 4-2023, amending Chapter 181 of the Code of the Village of Buchanan by adding Article 6, or V1, a copy of which is attached here too, and made a part of this resolution. And be it further resolved that the village clerk be and hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of the State of New York.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion authorizing the adoption of Local Law Number 4-2023, amending Chapter 181 of the Code of the Village Buchanan. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding Chapter 171 entitled Subdivision of Land to the Code of the Village Buchanan. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Stephanie, would you like to do an overview on that also? Thank you.
Sure. So you have Chapter 171, it's called Subdivision of Land. In 171-11, it had, you had a provision to reserve recreation areas or money in lieu thereof. So what we're doing here is the final, the final line in that, it's 171-11D. The final line prohibited the board from using any of the recreation money for general maintenance. And over the years, I think that it's become clear, at least to the boards before this board and probably this board, that the money sits there until you're ready to do something new, and maintenance of some of your recreation facilities could be used. So in essence, the state law is still complied with, because the first five sentences are state law. One of your boards added that last line, we're taking it out. So you can use now the rec money for maintaining some of your rec facilities. That's, that's what it's doing.
Any comments from the board?
Well, I think this amendment was done because in years past, we couldn't really make necessary repairs to the pool, right? So this gives us the ability to be able to do that. We've got a pool that's aging, and every year is in need of some kind of repair, and it's not cheap. So this gives us a little more flexibility with the fees that are in the recreation to address that, correct?
Any comments from the floor? Nick? Come up to the podium.
Hey, y'all. I think I was probably the chief opponent of, of using the rec fund for maintenance. I always thought that should come from the regular village budget, since the spirit of it was to, to expand recreation. And, and there were ways to change the wording. I know we discussed this many times, like we talked about doing new staircases at Lenz Cove, which still haven't been done, and thought that, okay, they're new staircases, so, you know, I mean, sometimes it was just semantics, how you worded. Is this a repair? No, we're doing something new. So I'm not, I wouldn't say that I'm terribly opposed to your change to the law, but, but I think that the village should not forget about some of the things that would be, could expand our recreation program. And if all that money goes to regular maintenance, you know, that seems like, that would be harder to do, so that's my only comment.
Thanks.
Thanks, Nick.
Thanks, Nick.
So I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing regarding Chapter 171 entitled Subdivision of Land to the Code of the Village Buchanan.
Second that?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And now I'm going to have, I happen to have four resolutions tonight, so each board member is going to read a resolution. So I'm gonna have Anthony read this next one.
Okay, Village Buchanan Resolution Authorizing Adoption of Local Law Number 5-2023, amending Chapter 171 of the Code of the Village of Buchanan. Whereas a resolution was duly adopted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan for a public hearing to be held by said village at the Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan to hear all interested parties on a proposed local law amending Chapter 171 entitled Subdivision of Land to the Code of the Village of Buchanan. And whereas notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official local newspaper, and whereas said public hearing was duly held at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Village of, at the Village Board on August 1, 2023 at 7:00 PM at the Municipal Building 236 Tate Avenue Buchanan, New York, and all parties in attendance were permitted on, permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of the Village of Buchanan to adopt said local law. Now be it, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Buchanan hereby adopt said local law number 5-2023, amending Chapter 171 of the Code of the Village of Buchanan, a copy which is, is attached here too and made part of this resolution. And be it further resolved that the village clerk be and he, be and he hereby.
This is all this legalese stuff. This is Stephanie.
Be and he hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the Village of Buchanan, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of the State of New York.
All right, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt a local law. He, yeah.
Be and he.
Say that again?
Is that the he/him/her thing?
Be and he.
She, yeah, it should be she, right?
It should be she.
Village clerk be and he.
She.
Sheen.
Just she. Put it as in front of it.
Okay. Whoa. I second that.
Oh, okay, so I'm making a motion to adopt the local law number 5-2023, amending Chapter 171 of the Code of the Village Buchanan. Anthony has seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
And Stephanie, this, and Bob, I'm gonna have you read the next resolution, but this is the IMA agreement again.
Here we go, Stephanie.
Me? I'm doing this one?
Yes, ma'am.
IMA, this is your baby.
That's it.
I put this baby to bed a long time ago. Okay, all you're being asked to do is that the state came in and insisted that since they took away funds from the $7 million, we would like you to, to agree to that. And so you are part of this resolution, as you're agreeing that the original cooperative agreement said that you, the award was $7 million, and now you're saying you, you agree with the fact that it's 6.7 million. Well. So, sorry, 6.75 million. So, so basically, you didn't have a choice, but tonight you're, you're going to say thank you for giving us the 6.75 million. And an updated timeline, because of your call, the original cooperative agreement said it had to be signed by whatever date it was, September, it was, you know. So they would like that amended to reflect the time that it really was signed. And the IMA, is this one for the IMA too? Yeah, with the IMA. So the IMA, the change was, you recall that they wanted, the town insisted that it would be in perpetual, perpetual in time. The state has suggested that we change that to 40 years.
Forty years.
And then it can, and then you can, the boards at that point, which is what I was suggesting the entire time, the boards at that point can choose, how's it going? What do we need to do? Is it, do it changes? Or they can re-sign it. So the state would like that changed too. So you're changing two things, the IMA, it's only 40 years, taking a one line. The cooperative agreement, you're changing the date, and you're changing the amount of the award from $7 million to 6.75. And that's what they've asked you to sign tonight.
And you are correct, once the state took control of the money, they took control of the money, and they make, they call the shots, unfortunately. So it has gone down somewhat. I know you had suggested, but the town was insistent that it would be in perpetuity. But now the state is saying, oh, 40 years. It, they said something that goes along with the bond, the bonding.
It's on the state law.
On the state, yeah.
You cannot do it forever.
Right, so they, they had.
They wanted it forever, and so.
Okay, forever. So we already voted on this in May, but they wanted additional changes.
And it's here.
And it's here. And so that's why we're doing it again in August. So if Bob could read.
One more thing, by the way, once you sign this, or you authorize your signature, because we have it here tonight, you can sign it whenever, but they'll authorize it. Then Marcus, you can submit for reimbursement.
Oh, that's right, they're holding back our reimbursement as well.
Oh, that was, that was gonna be my comment, was, when do we get the reimbursements for the legal fees and the engineering fees?
After your brief and the town.
Well, originally it was, once the IMA was signed.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, the goalpost always seemed to move.
Unless you sign this, you're not getting reimbursed.
Yep, okay.
And that now locks in the 6.75, or there's an ability.
For now, yeah.
As far as we know.
As far as we know, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, this is the problem. This is, this has not been, it's, like I said, they're calling the shots, they've got the money, once energy released, the money, the state had it, and we were told, we were told, we have, we are in control of the money, and that's how it is. So, thank you very much. But we're gonna get a new sewer treatment plant, and we'll be working on that.
Which is all good.
Yeah. Long time coming.
But you have a resolution, you know that, right? You've got a resolution.
Yes, and Bob is gonna read the resolution.
You ready, Bob?
I'm ready for you, Bob.
Okay. The Village Buchanan Resolution Authorizing the Village Mayor to Execute an amended cooperative agreement and IMA with the State and Town of Cortlandt for the Indian Point Settlement Fund. Whereas prior to Indian Point's closure, a $15 million settlement fund was established pursuant to the Indian Point Closure Agreement. And whereas the Town of Cortlandt, Village Buchanan, and State of New York entered into a cooperative agreement in February 2022, that's the original cooperative agreement, which outlined a process of, for obtaining the town and village, town and villages' portion of the settlement fund. And whereas, a requirement of the original cooperative agreement was that the town and village enter into an intermunicipal agreement, an IMA, for sewer improvements, upgrades, and expansions. And whereas, a town and village entered into this intermunicipal agreement on May 2, 2023. And whereas, based on the terms of the IMA, the state is requiring certain amendments to the term of the IMA and the original cooperative agreement, including a new maximum award amount and a 6.75 million, and an updated timeline. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village mayor is authorized to execute an updated cooperative agreement and IMA pertaining to the Indian Point Settlement Fund with the State and the Town of Cortlandt.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute amended cooperative agreement and IMA with the State and Town of Cortlandt for the Indian Point Settlement Fund. I have a second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I'm, I'm gonna abstain from this, because I wasn't part of these negotiations at all. I abstained from a previous vote on this also.
Okay, all right, thanks, Bob. I'm gonna wait on that, because if I hit the mega-million tonight, this, this agreement will be moved. Keep your fingers crossed, people. Okay. All right, I'm going to make a motion call for a public hearing on September 5 regarding noise control. So the board has been discussing this. We seem to have some issues. And the last time this code was changed was, parts of it, in 2017, there was a part of it that was changed over construction and demolition and, and equipment. But the original law is from 1971, I hear, see here, 1982. So it's, it's time for it to, to get upgraded. So we'll have a public hearing to discuss that in, at the September 5 meeting. And Marcus, the, that will be on, on, online for people to review what's being recommended or what we'll be voting on. Okay, any questions from the board on the noise control?
So you want the red line version to be up on the website?
Or you want me to just?
You want to fire?
I think you should leave it.
All right, yeah, you know, because in case the public wants to come in to make comments too, you know, at least they see ahead of time what, what we're looking at.
The changes are.
Yeah, if we, if we could do that, okay.
No, I mean, the, you know, the penalties for the offenses are exactly what we discussed, so, you know, I'm good with the language, and we'll have a public hearing on the 5th.
Take note of the enforcement official, that's added.
Yeah.
You didn't have an enforcement official.
Yeah, you and I spoke about this earlier, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but just for everybody.
Yep.
So it's the hours, the fines, and the new section is the enforcement official, which I think would help a judge to actually award some fines, because it's not subjective. You've had, you have ways to, to get an actual fine.
And this adds in the sworn affidavits of two or more unrelated persons?
It's one of the ways.
One of the ways, okay.
Yeah, by any of the following. You could also, I also put in there direct observation by an officer or official tasked with enforcement of this chapter, which includes, but it's not limited to, a police officer's body-worn camera. I thought that that might be an interesting way, if a judge wanted to know, well, how do you define noise, and how loud was it?
Yeah.
Sure, or him.
Yeah, no, I think that's good to add that.
But again, you can look at it during the month. If you, if you folks think of any other ways, or anything else you might see in another code, we can amend it up until that day.
Sounds good.
We're gonna be, I guess, looking at a few other different codes to, to address certain things that are going on, and I don't even wanna tell you what I saw today.
Noise, under noise?
No, something else.
Peter was gonna address the bright lights on, you know, some of these properties that are shining into people's.
Is that a code amendment? Is that a code amendment?
If you're a new section.
Okay.
Well, it's not gonna be on for next month because I didn't.
No, no. So we're only working now on the noise. Um, the other ones we'll discuss at the workshop. Okay, so I'd like to make a, a motion to call for a public hearing on September fifth regarding noise control. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, discussion of trees around the circle. I know, um, Scott has come to me, you know, he knows we're in discussion about the trees around the circle. Um, and the board has been discussing it. And, um, Bob, I know you were, um, you were gonna look into some things, but, um, what the, the question is from Scott is, can he take the trees that are down there now? So he wanted some direction on that. I, I, I don't know. I think we kinda need to know what we're doing to replace what we're looking at. Did you get a chance to, to look at anything?
I just looked at the trees briefly. I know that the one tree needs to come down now. It's dead.
Yeah, that one is, the one is dead.
Right, that one's dead. Uh, I did talk with Cheryl today, uh, more about this. She's on the beautification committee. And, uh, she's gonna talk to Becky with some ideas, with a couple of some ideas for us to see what we're gonna do to go forward from here.
Go ahead.
But I will say that right after one of those heavy rains we had over a month ago, a couple of big branches came off some of these trees, and the trees don't look healthy from where that branch came off. So, you know, I don't know if we need to wait or not. I know we need to have a plan, but personally, I think it might be better to do it and then see what we're looking at so we can maybe envision it a little bit better than just looking at a bunch of trees there that are not looking that good and try to figure what we're gonna do. That's just my opinion.
I, I actually talked to Scott about this.
Okay.
Um, I met with him, uh, last week about something, and he brought it up to me and, uh, asked me what I thought. And I'm not really familiar with, I, I didn't, I know the trees now. I wasn't familiar at the time. There is one dead tree. Uh, I actually like trees. I like the way they look at sidewalks. I think it looks, you know, it looks appropriate, especially if they were, you know, healthy trees.
Right.
But if we are gonna remove the trees, he said somebody recommended putting pavers in there, and I, I, I recommend to just pour in concrete. Because the, uh, you're never gonna get all the roots out of it. The root system is underneath the sidewalk. It's gonna decay. The, the pavers will sink. You're better off just pouring a slab of concrete, uh, and, you know, tying it into the existing concrete. That's my personal opinion, unless we're gonna do some kind of beautification there. You know, we wanna do something else and maybe make the tree pits a little bigger, take the root system out, and put a nicer tree in there. You know, um, just take some sidewalk away, make it, make it more, um, acceptable to grow in that area, you know. But they have to be maintained, and, and that's the key to it. So, that's my opinion. I like the way the tree's looking the sidewalk. If we take away a little bit more concrete, the trees may be able to grow a little, a little better than they are now.
Yeah.
And it's not like the sidewalks are utilized tremendously in that area. You know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't really hurt.
I think, if, if I remember, uh, I think it was the mid nineteen ninety-five when that whole area was done over. Um, I know Bardax Sella came in. I know I mentioned it before. And, um, that whole circle was redone with the pavers and the sidewalk was extended and, and all kinds of stuff happened out there. So those trees are, what, almost thirty years old? So, um, I know we have to replace something. I, I've seen in some places where they have the big, um, uh, ceramic, uh, containers where you can put a large tree in there. I don't know if that's an option. I don't know, you know, I'm not sure if we can get enough roots. Maybe we can. Maybe, you know, if we get an auger or something or whatever they do, maybe we can take that out and replant it.
You could, you, you, I mean, you could replant. I mean, you just gotta remove all the root system that's in there, you know. But you may have to take away a little bit more sidewalk.
Well, that's a good thought too, because I do know that where the trees are now, they're all, uh, wrapped, they were, uh, stoned around that. So there's a pretty good opening there where we might go get the, the roots out.
Okay. All right. We need to look at that. And then, you know, then we get into what kind of tree gets replaced and.
Right. Something that's hardy.
Yeah.
I was gonna say something that'll live.
Yeah. Cause, you know, you have the salt from the road and, you know, and it, it is hot out at that circle. That sun really beats really hard. So you gotta get somebody, something that's healthy and grows. Yes, ma'am. Eileen.
She wrecked in the joint.
Yeah, look at that.
All right. I'm, I'm into trees too, so I don't have a problem with that. But you've got two projects coming up with sidewalks. Some of them do have trees. Are you going to consider how that's all going to work? Because on Albany Post Road, you're going to have sun. So, you know, depending upon how hardy the tree is, somebody needs to contact an arborist or a nursery to find out what exactly can be planted.
Just a little, uh, the landscaping engineer, they're just gonna be looking at area to provide the, the right type of trees for, for sidewalks. So it's a landscaper.
And that should be part of their site plan.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm just saying, that's something to consider. If you take these trees out and don't replant them, are you gonna do the same thing with the site plan?
Now, we'll be very, and you'll be involved too with the site plan review.
Well, I mean, it's just a thought, you know, anywhere you're going to put sidewalks, if you decide to put trees, you have to think, is that the best option?
Point well taken. I mean, it's, you know.
You know.
Yeah.
Whether it's here or whether it's over by Blakely Avenue, you know, it doesn't make a difference where it is. But you're going to have sidewalks put in. So you might want trees and you might not want trees, depending. So I just wanted to just keep it in your mind.
Some trees grow into really, really bad areas in the city, and it's, it's amazing where they'll grow.
Yep.
It really is. If we get the right tree.
Some trees in good areas.
Yeah, right.
Die anyway.
Yeah.
Doesn't make a difference. I don't, you know.
Well, that's, once, once they come up with a site plan and they recommend a tree, maybe we follow suit with the same tree. This way everything matches. It's all, you know, it, it's.
It's uniform.
It's all uniformed and, and, uh, looks right.
Okay.
Well, I think the only difference might be is the circle, the trees are right on a sidewalk right next to the buildings. And I think these other projects we talked about, the trees probably will not be in the sidewalks. They'll probably be off the sidewalks. I would think.
Right.
Yeah, I would keep it away. Cause we saw with these trees, it lifted several areas of the sidewalk. I mean, lifted them really, where it was dangerous. All right. Well, so shall we leave them until we make a decision of what's, or shall we cut them down?
Well, I mean, is the one in, in danger of coming down? I don't think it's in danger of coming down, but it's obviously dead. I mean, there's not even a leave on it.
Take that one down.
The one that's dead, take it down.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's not coming back.
All right. So the other ones we'll leave until we're ready to replace them?
Yep.
Okay.
I think that gives the, uh, the beautification committee.
Just needed some direction.
That gives the beautification committee an opportunity to, uh, think about what they might have some ideas about.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Keep them involved in it.
They can cut it down to this, to the stump.
Yeah.
And put it, uh, planted there like you said for now, if you want.
Yep.
All right, good. All right. And, uh, Buchanan Day is September sixteenth. We are having a, um, a walk run before that, starting at ten thirty. And then, uh, people will come back to the pavilion. And, uh, we have our typical Buchanan Day hamburgers, hot dogs. Uh, there'll be some vendors there. Um, a band, we're gonna, well, we're gonna have, Dennis Blakely, six-string country. And so kind of, everything kinda kicks off around eleven o'clock there. And we'll have different things, bouncy castles, of course, you know. Um, the firehouse will be cooking the hamburgers and hot dogs, and, uh, the police department will be giving out ice cream. So what I kinda needed to talk to, we kinda, I think, resolved, Steve, with the insurance. We had a little.
Yeah.
Discussion on the insurance with the, uh, the running club. And Marcus, uh, the beautification committee has done this before, and they have, um, like, it's a fundraiser for them, and they've used the whole pavilion, and they've, um, like, gotten, uh, vendors, you know, selling different things. Um, so we have enough room in there where we can have an area for vendors. We can have a room for Buchanan Day, bouncy castles and everything. So they would be, uh, charging a fee as a fundraiser and would be, uh, part of Buchanan Day. And we, you know, we've gotten donations for Buchanan Day, so it's, no taxpayer dollars are ever used for that.
Great.
Yep, we're moving along.
I think the only thing we wanted to discuss is the advertising of the race on the village website. I think Stella from the running club had provided Marcus with, uh, some information she would like. I think, uh, it'd be a great idea to get, get it out there, give them a, a way to advertise the race that day.
I think we should put it on social media too, Facebook. We have a Facebook page.
Cause Sharon's here.
Maybe they can get a banner to put up.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna advertise Buchanan Day, put it on your banner.
Yeah.
Include it into whatever advertisement you use.
Yeah, I have to get over to, uh, star signs.
Perhaps some of the community pages, you know, that people have throughout the area.
I think, I think sometimes people share.
I mean, I'll run if you want me to.
I'll pay you to run. I'll watch this. I'm not running. I'll watch.
It's only five K.
I don't know if I could walk it.
I don't know if I could either.
So, we'll see.
Yeah.
You guys will be fine. You youngins, yeah. Okay, so, um, information from officers and departments, justice reports, June twenty twenty-three. Um, one of the reports is seven hundred and four dollars. I did see a second report here. Did I lose it? Yep, I must have misplaced it, but it was in here. Uh, the police report, Steve?
Yes, Mayor. For the month of June twenty twenty-three, there was a total of one hundred eighty-nine calls to the Village of Buchanan Police Department. Of those calls, um, we had here five arrests, twenty-three calls for service, five nine-one-one hangup calls, uh, some other things that the police department assisted in. Um, there was a harassment, two motor vehicle accidents, a couple mental health checks. Um, they also issued, uh, twenty-seven moving summons, speeding, disobeying traffic controls, and other miscellaneous violations. So that's the month of June.
Thank you. Um, Anthony just handed me the other report I was looking for. Uh, the other is four thousand six hundred and eighteen. And Marcus, I think we're getting caught up from the COVID and, and the backlog we had.
Yeah, the quad is doing a very good job.
Okay, good. Tell Mary, thank you.
Yeah, she's been fantastic.
Great. No, thank you. Okay, highway report. That's Anthony.
Um, so the highway report, um. Seventy-six tons of household garbage, twenty tons of bulk and dumpsters. A lot of stuff. Wood chips, twenty-seven yards. Um, they were busy again. Welding manholes shut in front of thirty-two-eleven Albany Post Road, cut grass, weed whacked, um, cleaned up around Lenz Cove. Uh, I know they were working on the steps at Wentz, Lenz Cove.
They finished, they finished it.
They finished today, yeah. I, I spoke to Scott. He said he just had to pour the slab on the bottom, and the, the steps would be completed. Um, uh, like I said, I, I met with, with, uh, Scott, and, uh, he, we communicated on a few things that he'd like to do, moving forward, uh, with equipment and stuff. And, and, uh, they all seemed pretty optimistic to get more involved with making the village beautiful. And, uh, it was, it was actually a nice little meeting we had. So, um, oh, they fixed the tennis court, filled it with blacktop, uh, prep for pavilion events, and they did a lot of work for the summer camp. And that's it.
They're always busy. Yep, thank you. Uh, wastewater plant, June twenty twenty-three, uh, treated wastewater, seven million five hundred fifty-five thousand gallons. Sludge removal, a hundred and eighty-two thousand gallons. Um, there were six reports to the Westchester County Department of Health and also to the DEC. Um, yeah, they have something here. Particip- precipitation, four point one inches. So we had a really tough month with the, with the water. But, um, and then on June twelfth, Albany Post Road line was jetted and cleaned, partial grease obstruction. And we've talked, the board's talked about it at Fat Sells with that bend in that, that pipe. So that, that'll get addressed. Okay, building department. That's Bob.
That's me. Let's see, uh, they issued seventeen building permits. They had fifteen inspections that required, that are required for new, newly issued permits. Uh, let's see, sixteen inspections on file for permits and compliance inspections. Eleven COs were issued. Uh, let's see. And six compliance inspections for resale or refinance. And there's additional items here. Let's see what we got. There are several municipal searches on, that are on hold until the COs are issued from the compliance inspections. There are several compliance inspections awaiting reinspection for new COs issued, issued. That's that.
Peter, do you have anything else you wanna add to your?
No, Mayor.
Any updates? Okay, all right.
No, Mayor, I'm fine with this.
Thank you. All right, good. Uh, okay, thank you. And Buchanan Engine Company?
That would be me. So for the month of June, uh, we had a total of thirteen alarms, zero structure fires, three were EMS assist, five were automatic alarms, and five were mutual aid. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's no prosecutor's report this month. Attorney's report. Stephanie, what do you have for us?
I don't have anything, um, additional. However, I think that we're gonna try to get Ingrid in, um, to discuss a matter in executive session if she's available. And that would be regarding, uh, AAA and the litigation. We're gonna try to reach her. She's kind of tied up right now, but she said she'll do her best to get in when we get into it. So on behalf of the prosecutor, we're seeking an, uh, executive session for that discussion.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
And that would be, when I go into executive session, that would be for litigation or?
Yep.
Okay, Marcus?
I had one item, uh, since Stephanie's talked about it. I totally forgot about it. Um, if I remember, I'll let you guys know. I just forgot. I do have a personal issue in executive we need to discuss.
Okay.
There was something up that I just forgot right now, but I.
Okay, you'll remember. It'll come back to you. Okay, trustees report. We're gonna start with you, Steve.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and I and trustee Wheeler, we attended the kickoff recreation committee just about an hour ago, which I think that's, that'll be very helpful in trying to decide what are their needs, um, for recreation going forward. Um, having, you know, discussed that, I know we, we have George, the engineer, um, working on the pickleball courts. I'm not really sure where the, that is, you know, if he has the bids going. But I, I came across recently in the paper, there's a, a public notice of bidders. The town of Cortlandt is advertising, uh, bids for a pickleball court, I guess over by the train station, which got me, you know, where are we advertising? The, the town of Cortlandt uses, uh, Bidnet Direct, which I'm, I'm familiar with, uh, to advertise their bids. But where does the village advertise any of their, their work-related bids?
Normally, George is one who, um, advertises.
Yeah, I know he's not available.
Yeah. Uh, I'll get you, I'll find out.
Something, yeah. Because, uh, you know, it's a great resource. It's something that all contractors and developers go to as a source to, to look to see what, you know, you know, simple work is out there. So I'd like to know that. Um, just, you know, at last week's workshop, you know, we had a lot of discussions about, you know, um, a survey with village property. I, I just wanna reiterate, you know, uh, we're kind of at a crossroads in the village, and we just wanna keep our, you know, everything open, all options on the table. Make sure to portray to, you know, developers out there that, you know, we're open for business. We're open to, to hear ideas. And that's the best thing, I think, that we could do for the residents of the village, is to just listen to ideas. And, you know, when anything comes across, you know, the village, um, whether it's, you know, in, in the administrator's office or wherever, just, you know, that, that we're all notified and we're all on the same page, and we could all kinda do our, our homework and our due diligence. Um, the other thing I would like to add to the workshop possibly, um, next month is David, I know, was authorized to begin the rezoning over, um, was it the M-one district?
Yes.
So I'd like to just see where he is on that so we could kinda get that ball rolling. And then in regards to the release of the sixty acres of Holtek, if it's possible, Mayor, you know, if, if maybe we can form, whether it be a subcommittee or, or something amongst the board that, you know, we can all, um, kinda just get on board with and, and trying to get that moving forward. Be helpful.
I'll see if, um, I, I did mention that the board was interested in continuing that discussion and, uh, also the negotiation.
Right.
They said currently, right now, they were dealing with other stuff, but maybe we could get, um, a representative in and just, uh, have a discussion with the whole board at the same time, and we'll be on the same page with that.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. And so I'm glad you brought up, um, I, I know, I, I didn't, I kinda forgot that you weren't on the board when we went through this whole battery storage thing, and we had them come in to do a presentation, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm, I'm gonna leave it up to the board if they want. So, I'm, I'm gonna leave it up to the board if they want this person to come in to redo a presentation. Because we're all in different places.
No, my, my comments weren't really in particular to that.
Okay.
Well, just in general. I, I believe that, you know, every, um, available option for any available property should be looked at. That, that's all. It wasn't anything in particular.
Okay. Dan, what do you have for us?
Uh, just a few items. Um, just want to give a little shout-out and a thank you to our beautification committee. Our circle looks fantastic out there when you drive through. The other thing is, I, you know, I, just to reiterate, I had it on my, uh, notes here too, about the release of the sixty-five acres. I think, um, you know, the village, we're, you know, we're the whole community, and I think, um, you know, those sixty-five acres, um, getting released are, are, uh, you know, it's, it's an important, it's important to the village that, you know, we'd be able to do something with those sixty-five acres. And then my other thing was just to follow up on the state grant that we were supposed to be getting in relation to, I believe, what, a hundred thousand from our lovely friend, Mr. Harkum?
Yes, I, I, I was disappointed. I didn't know you were there, Dan, because I would have had you sit, sit next to me and the senator, and I, I told him about the grant.
I sat in the back of the room once.
Okay. You know, I know you would have loved to sit there. But I, I sent to everybody the, uh, they're having something, I think it's next Wednesday at three o'clock, um, they're going to be talking about the grant. So, I don't know who on the board is available, uh, that would like to go and, um, or if Marcus would like to go. So, they're gonna explain, you know, he said to me last night, "Oh, I gave you a hundred thousand dollars," and I'm like, "Oh, that's so nice of you. I bought a Mercedes." No, I didn't. Um, so this is a, it's called a crest grant, and it's a grant for, uh, an EV vehicle, whether it's, uh, he did say police cars. I asked him last night. He either's lightweight. Okay, well, yeah, they're gonna say yes to anything, right?
And the price of the vehicle.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's for a, uh, light duty, heavy duty, emergency vehicle, uh, highway vehicles. It also includes, we might have enough money to put a few, uh, EV chargers, you know, one at the highway, you know, so we'll see what they come in at. So, we're gonna be getting some type of an electric vehicle for the village, and it will be covered under the hundred thousand dollar grant.
That's great.
Yeah, so that's, you know, and we've, we've been using the other grants for other things like the pavilion, you know, so over the years, we've been, you know, doing upgrades to the pavilion. Or, um, we did one year the sewer, not the sewer, the water, uh, where we do a hundred thousand dollars worth of the INI a year.
Oh, I mean, it's a sewer, yes.
So, we're, we're gonna be doing, we also had a hundred thousand dollar grant that, uh, George has been really busy with the other grants that we have to have in by August eleventh. So, we'll also be painting the pavilion, and the last thing that will need to be done on the pavilion is the roof, and I just saw the price on it. So anyhow, yeah, that's a dilly. But, you know, we want to keep that pavilion. That's a, a nice asset that we have here in the village, and it's, it's well-used, so.
All right, so that's next Wednesday, the, the ninth?
I believe it was the ninth. I had sent it out to everybody, yeah, I had sent it out. So, anybody that can go, that, that's at the Osning Village Hall.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I want to get a picture of you and the senator.
Great.
I won't be there.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, you're working at three o'clock, yeah, yeah. Anthony, what do you have for us tonight?
Uh, like I said before, I, I met with Scott, and, uh, I had a good meeting with him, and, and, uh, we did, Eileen, we discussed your, me and him going to look at your outlet pipe.
Not my outlet, it's your easement.
It's my easement, but we've spoke about it, yeah. I did speak about that with him, and we are gonna set up a plan to go look at it and try and repair it, figure out what we're gonna do. Uh, I also spoke to him about getting the proper equipment, uh, for our DPW, maybe a backhoe, uh, something that we could utilize and make them, make their life more, uh, make it easier for them to get more work done. Uh, I, I saw some of the way they, they operate down there, and it doesn't seem to be, uh, it more, it's, it's not working harder. I mean, not working smarter, it's working harder, and I just want to try and make their life a little easier. Uh, maybe we can discuss looking at auctions or something where we can find a piece of equipment or grant money where we can get a piece of equipment to, uh, work with them. Our paving is starting soon, correct?
Yes, um.
Did we get any word on that?
Uh, there were, I saw some documentation going back and forth about the, uh, contract, uh, documents, uh, that, uh, no, that were going back between George and the contractor, so they're finalizing all the documents necessary. As soon as they got a date, of course, we'll let the board know.
Yeah, I know people are, people are excited to get new blacktop. Everybody always is. And, um, I, I, I do like the idea that we do put up a subcommittee to talk about the, the sixty-six acres. Um, I feel like, you know, they've taken enough from us, and it's time for us to get back a little bit here. Uh, it's really our piece of the pie for taking, and we gotta be a little aggressive, you know. Not that we're not being aggressive now, but maybe more aggressive to get in their ear and, uh, get what's ours. And just to touch on, uh, a, another subject. Last week, I want to apologize to the public for the way I acted in here. I was very upset about something, but it wasn't really upsetting. It was, it was, uh, I was having a bad day. Let's just say that. So, uh, I want to apologize, but I, I do agree with Steve that anybody that wants to come into the village, whether it be a battery or, uh, a, whatever it may be, we do need to give them a, a passage to, uh, to listen and hear what they have to say. And, and that's my obligation to the village, and that's why, you know, the last time they wanted to come in and do the batteries down by Lafarge, I keep calling it certain certainty, uh, it, it wasn't a good idea. It, it seemed like it would have, we would have planted the seed, and it would have grown and grown and grown, and if the, it's riverfront property, and we may never be able to utilize it again. This is a different area that they have a different idea, so I do want to hear the idea. Not that I like batteries. I don't, I'm not a big, um, person on, on green energy as it is, uh, but I know this is the way of the future, and we have to listen. Uh, I, I feel like at one point, the state is gonna make all the communities listen, kind of like they're doing now. And I want to make sure that we hear out everybody that wants to come into the village. Like Steve said, Steve said we're open for business. We need to make, uh, we need to get some integrity in our budget and, and make this a, uh, you know, a community agreement on what we build here, something that everybody is gonna benefit from. And, um, I'm, once again, I'm sorry for lashing out last week. I, you know, but that's all I have to say.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer again, so I guess when they, the battery storage people finish surveying the village property over by the sewer treatment plant, I will give the option to the board if they'd like to put that on the agenda and have them present. So, I think the, uh, survey should be, should be done relatively quickly, so.
Yeah, I can't, I can't imagine the survey taking them that long. I don't, I don't really know what, I don't really know what they're surveying. You know, I, I would, I would, it was probably infrastructure. It'd have to be infrastructure.
That's correct.
And, uh, I can't imagine it taking that long, but whatever the survey comes up with, I, I'd like to see it. I'd just like to see it, and, and then I think we should make a decision.
Yeah, I had, like I said, I forgot that most of the board had not been through, um, the presentation that they did once before with the battery storage. Okay. Bob, what do you have?
Okay, I really have too much. I do have a question, though. Uh, is the town of Cortland already negotiating with Holtech about a piece of property?
Yes, they are in continued.
They're talking to the town, but not to us, and I agree with what Anthony's saying here. We need to maybe push a little harder about getting some communication there for us. Look out for us because no one else is.
So.
That's, that's how I feel about that. I think we have to, you know, maybe play a little, how are we gonna play hardball to get in that, in that door to talk?
So, so you know, it's, it's two acres, and when they release property, they have to do, um, oh, I forget what it is, but it's, it's really, uh, an in-depth look at the property. They have to check on a, a host of things, and one is, is there any radiological decontamination? Is there any, um, I don't know, frogs, bats, whatever? So, they pick that small area first because it's only two acres. I, you know, they know we are very interested. They have to settle with the town by the end of the year, otherwise they go back on the rolls. So, they're still continuing to work with the town. Um, but like I said, I'll see if I can get a representative in here, um, before one of the board meetings, and they can, you know, the board can ask questions and, uh, see where we are in the process. But yes, we've been working on the sixty acres for many years, and that was part of the intervenor agreement that they would continue discussions on that.
Yeah, I just think we have to push them a little bit to start working with us.
Start a little fire under them, maybe?
Yeah, that's what we need here. And I, I know I brought up, uh, last month, I believe, about getting back to rezoning that whole area down there.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Sooner or later, we have to make these decisions, and why wait? You know, there's a lot of property that we should be working on. I know you guys talked about this a while ago.
Yeah.
Other things gotten away, but I think we should maybe have a more serious discussion about that.
And that, we had brought Dave in for that. Dave Smith, we had brought in, and, uh, we had, we were lucky, we had money to cover it. There's also other money out there that we can use, but yeah, that's got to come back on the front burner, but, you know, between AMS, between, you know, all these developers and this happening, that hap- you know, sometimes this is unfortunately what happens. Things get, like, pushed aside because, you know, you bring out, there's so many fires going, you bring out the fire truck, and it's like, you know, which, which fire goes out first? But this is important. This is important.
This has been going on for a while too, the discussion. I think it's a good thing to do.
We started discussions.
And that, I know, you know, we talk about having a lot of meetings, and, and we're in tough times. We have to have a lot of meetings. That's what we have to do.
That's, I'm fine being here till midnight, one o'clock, doesn't bother me.
And the last thing I have is just a, uh, reflecting what, uh, Steve said, that I met with trustee Laker and Mayor Nick Abacher with the recreational committee, if that's what you want to call it, with two of the members there. It seemed like they have a lot of good ideas. They're thinking outside the box, and I know we, I, there's two more people that are involved that I believe.
Yes.
Knowing who they are, I think they're gonna come up with some pretty, uh, out-of-the-box ideas for us, which will give us a lot of other things to think about, you know? So, that's all I have.
That's all right. It was interesting doing the, the big tour today of our recreational facilities. We went to the pool, we went to the, uh, tennis courts slash possible, um,
Pickleball.
Pickleball, the pavilion, and then over to Lenz Cove. So, you know, just to start working and, and planning for the future. The only thing I wanted to discuss, because everybody else touched on everything, was, um, I was at the decommissioning oversight board meeting last night. It was basically responding to comments that, um, people had made. Um, I didn't realize Dan was in the audience. He loves these meetings. I didn't realize how much he liked these meetings. So, I just, I, I, it's, 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 as they say, the same players, the same questions, um, and what they don't really understand, and, and you're gonna see this unfold, and I'm surprised the state hasn't come out with this. I just, the original agreement is, it said that they would continue to discharge in to the river while they were operating and after. So, that's the original agreement signed January two thousand seventeen with the three men in the room, the governor, Entergy, and Riverkeeper. So, we had another joint proposal, and that's when we became an intervenor in two thousand twenty-one, and that's how we got into these certain situations with Holtech that gave us a little more leverage. In that agreement, it says that Holtech would continue to discharge into the river. When we get into the post-shutdown decommissioning activities report, which was the roadmap of how the plant would be decommissioned, it references it in there. So, I think they're gonna be very upset when they find out that a legal agreement, legal agreements have been signed. I, I just, um, the governor's in place right now. Uh, if she doesn't sign that bill, she'll be anti-saving the Hudson, she'll be against the Hudson River. If she does sign that bill, I believe there'll be some major litigation going on, and I think the village is gonna be part of that litigation. An agreement is an agreement. So, but our biggest, our biggest fear was placing those water tanks on the property. That's a no-go. And last night, Dan heard it too, last night, once again, those were the questions. One was, um, how long would it for the NRC to approve those water tanks? Um, have, has Holtech put in an application for the water tanks? We signed, we, we passed a resolution Ju- July fifth. No water tanks above or below ground. That's it. So, it's, the meetings are interesting. They're frustrating, but they're also interesting to see the questions and the things that come up, and these questions have been answered many times by the NRC. So, that's all I have for this evening. Um, what do we have from the floor? Any comments from the floor? Yep? Okay, don't fight over who's coming up here.
Thank you. Hello again. I have a few things. Uh, one, I was gonna ask if the village can put something on the website regarding the spotted lanternfly, because they've hit our area. I killed one in my driveway a couple of days ago. Uh, if you're not familiar with it, it's an invasive, uh, you have done?
No, no, I've heard, I know what you're talking about.
I don't know if anybody else has seen them. It's a beautiful bug with red dots, but you gotta squish them. And, um, they are an invasive. They, uh, will go after, uh, various plants. I'm not exactly sure. I believe fruit trees, grapevines, hardwood trees. And, um, the recommendation from any website you go on, including the U.S. Department of Agriculture, is, well, they say, "Report it when you see them," and they also say, "Then squish it." But, um, uh, I'm not familiar with all the stages. You know, the one I saw was this beautiful bug with a red back and white dots. Have you seen one?
I saw somebody posted on social media.
Yeah, so if we could put it on the website so people are aware, because, I mean, you know, there's no time to be thinking, "One of God's creatures, just kill the damn thing." So, maybe we could put something, a little link on the website with a picture or a link to the Department of Agriculture website that gives advice on what to do.
Good idea, Nick. Thank you.
Yep. Sharon is already on it.
Sharon's on it already.
Sarah's on already. Yeah, they've been working their way, I think, from south to north. Like, they had a lot of, I know some people in the city were seeing a lot of them. People were squishing them all over the sidewalks last year, and now they're up here. I also just wanted to mention, I watched the last two workshops online, and the one from two months ago was muted and blurry, and then the one from last month was clear and crisp. So, I don't know. Is there, was there some change in the equipment? What was that?
Weren't they involved in a meeting with the state?
Uh, you told, that was the state? The last workshop, the workshop from last week came in very clear, audible and everything. The workshop that I watched online from the previous month was all kind of dull and muted. Is there something that was done, or is that just some chance?
Oh, now I remember what I wanted to bring up. Thank you. Um, besides that, I'll check, we're having a website one, one today. Our TV channel is down. That's what I wanted to bring up. Thank you. A piece of equipment that's about twenty years old stopped working. We're trying to get a replacement. I've actually reached out to the Village of Osning. Mike found one at Village of Osning. Hopefully, we'll get it for free to replace it. It's ten thousand dollars. So, that's a separate topic where I want, if you're watching TV channel, it's, you can see this on YouTube, but you can't see it on our TV channel, so I wanted to board to know in case you get any phone calls.
I did.
But I can look into the, maybe the difference in quality or something like that.
The video quality and audio improved significantly a couple of months ago.
Yeah, so maybe I just.
It's been a couple of months.
Is that a change in our service, change in equipment?
Uh, they actually started videotaping internally versus videotaping off of Zoom, so the quality should be better now.
Yeah, so the, the July workshop versus the June workshop, a big difference, so it was very good to see.
That's good, Dan.
Especially as I get older and harder of hearing. I want to also say I agree strongly with Bob about pushing the process on the, um, on the Indian Point parcel and the, the, the plan for that parcel. I know that was getting discussed for two years when I was still on the board, and I haven't been on the board for a year and a half, so that's a discussion that's probably been delayed a little too long and very critical. I think the board, the board should also be looking at redoing the master plan. We, we attempted to do it on a shoestring budget, and it didn't pull together. It's a really critical thing, because that, right now, is the only thing, you know, that people will look at. Well, we want to develop this property, and it, and it agrees with what's in your master plan right now. You need to really, that has to be redone. That, you know, two thousand and five to now is eighteen years, and I think they recommend redoing it, updating it at least every ten years or so.
I, I agree with that. Are there grants available for that, Marcus? Or have they been in the past?
The town has gotten.
That's what I thought, I remember.
I can look into. I can look into that.
I don't know whether it's available now, but.
Nick, Nick, he's right, it's, it's time.
We started, we kind of started.
Yeah, I mean, to me, just tying in, into that, I, I, I'm not exactly sure how I feel about battery storage, but I know I don't feel it's a good thing for that property across from Lenzkove Park. You know, if you're looking at, in the future, develop, doing some kind of mixed use, which is what the last discussion was, over at the Indian Point property, that would be totally anathema to that, to have battery storage over there. Maybe somewhere else along the industrial part of the, you know, the properties that are going to be vacated, maybe. I don't quite get the whole battery storage thing. I haven't really researched that. Is it done in conjunction with solar or wind? What are they storing? Is it, is it ba-, is it a battery storage that's tied into solar and wind, or what is it?
The battery storage that I believe is they take the electricity off the grid at night when the cost is less, and then they resell it to the market during the day when the price is higher. That's what, my understanding.
So it's their own little gig? It's not going to change my electric rate, is it?
It's going to supply the city with a more sufficient amount of electricity than it don't have during the day at this time.
Correct.
It's inadequate, the system's inadequate right now. And this is how they're trying to redo it. They should have thought about that before they closed the plant down.
It's them trying, it's them trying to keep up.
So this is what we're dealing with now, because of that situation. There's an adequate amount of electricity in the city. They're building battery storage. I know, because I was on one in Queens, right in the middle of a block. They just built one. I did all the site work for this, for the location. They're going up everywhere. And I just want to do some homework on it. Do I like the idea? These batteries burn and burn and burn, I get it. But everything that, it, it just gets better. You know, we learn from our mistakes, we get better. Maybe there's, maybe there's some new batteries coming out, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make any final judgment on battery storage. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just saying I don't think that property is the place for it. It's too, it's going to be right next to, it's, it's right near homes. It's the possible mixed-use development down the road. It's our one and only park on the Hudson. I just think that's a bad spot for it. I think much better things could be done with that property. So, you know, you guys, I'm sure you'll do your job, you'll do your research and figure out if it could fit somewhere, if it has, if the tax rating on it would benefit the village. But I just don't think that's the property. So I, I also want to congratulate Teresa and Anthony, because I think you two are on your way, on the way to being best friends and working together very well. I think early on, when I was on the board, Teresa and I had a blowout that, that was kind of elevated. And, and luckily it was in executive session, so it didn't make it all over the TV. But, but after that, I think we both learned to see what the other one had to offer and worked together well. And, and most of the time I was on the board, we, we did work together very well. So I'm taking that last week thing as a sign that this is going to be a great working relationship going forward.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, thanks, Nick.
Okay, so I know Dave, Dave was working on the rezoning of Indian Point. I know he's heavily involved. He's going to have to be full-time here pretty soon. Lot going on here. He's heavily involved in the AMS and all the other things. But we're gonna, I don't know, I don't know if he has a separate evening that we can have discussions or we're, we're just here later. I, you know, it doesn't matter to me, I could be here till 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. I don't know how awake I'll be. But, but, you know, to, to do that. And I will, I'll contact Holtech tomorrow and get them to come in to have a conversation with us and see where they are in the process and see if we can light a fire under them. I'm sure we can, I'm sure we can. Any other comments from the floor?
I was going to ask, could David or George or anybody on the board think of what might be a possibility, an acceptable possibility over at the Griffin property? Not necessarily, is it up, it is up to him to decide this. But if cool heads prevail and you get a little bit of guidance, maybe we could help out that piece of property. You know, instead of not wanting this, not wanting that, you know?
Zone it for what we'd like to see.
Yeah, what would we like to see? And is that part of the zoning that would be what David is doing? Considering it's next to the sewer plant, you have Greentown Road. I mean, you do have stuff, but you want that 60 acres to be something that everybody will be amenable to. We won't be saying, "Oh, we don't like this, we don't like that." Well, you know, you're going to have to come up with a little more fact. But it's, it's a point that maybe between, if David has any time or can give you a starting point to be able to think about it, maybe we can help Griffin out to get the right building in there. I don't know. And the other thing is that, that recreation committee, is that open? Do you meet any specific time? And is the public invited to just sit in?
Would you like to be on the committee?
No.
You just sign yourself up.
That was not what I wanted. I thought you had people that were on the committee.
Yes, they are. And we finally met and did the tour. They'll be meeting on a Tuesday or Thursday night, because the village hall is open Tuesday or Thursday night. So I'm also going out tomorrow night with two other people. And then they'll make a decision what nights are best for them to meet.
Yeah, well, the only reason I say that, Teresa, is because when we did the master plan, the first master plan, I got a call because there was something regarding the property. So I did go and just observed. I wasn't part of their master plan committee, but I was able to go and observe it. And since I was involved, the property was involved in it, I did make a statement to them. But that's why I'm asking, if the committee meets, can the public go and sit in on it? You know, just to see what, you know, what, you know, what you guys are proposing or, you know?
It's not, it's not a closed meeting. I, you know, it's not like, you know, it's a committee meeting, so.
How would that be put on a calendar or an agenda?
Yeah, we could put it on the calendar when recreation committee meets, yeah.
You could do that?
We'll add it to the calendar, an email blast out, put it on the website. We'll do everything like any other meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks. You know, Marcus, I, I went to a meeting of Westchester municipal officials today. And there's a subcommittee on housing. And with the governor's proposal, we, of course, are not for that, because it's just insanity. But they will, the housing issue is coming back. And just to let everyone know, there are groups working on housing. There are communities in lower Westchester County that want the housing. They, they, they're, they're doing housing. Like, I can talk about White Plains, Hastings, Pleasantville. I mean, they're building like crazy down there. So, but what this group is looking at is, is to incentivize the people that want to build. So after we build the proposed things here, we don't really have any other property to build anything. So the next thing would be, you know, the Entergy property, whatever they release to us. We did get a price one time. I want to say back about 2013, the town did their master plan. I think it cost them about $75,000. I'm hearing different, Mount Kisco told me it was over $100,000. So could we just kind of get an idea of what that looks like? Because, you know, and then, so the village is basically built out almost at this point, other than the Entergy property.
Right.
And also the other. So do we do a GIS? Do we do, you know, a, a master plan for, you know, if we don't have that money and if we can't get a grant? Do we, do we just focus on that point at the, the potential for the future? You know what I mean? Do we focus on the Entergy property?
It's up to the board. I can get a price to do the entire village. I can get a price, I can also get a price just to the 65. The M1 district that we're talking about, across the Griffin property as well. Is it whatever the board directs me to do, I can get a price for either option. And then you decide what you want to do. And I'll look into possible grants, but at least you'll have a number.
All right, get some prices.
And that, that Smart Growth Initiative, I remember looking at the report that they did. If I remember correctly, that really only focused around the circle, not the entire village.
And the problem with that one is, I had a number of meetings with them, because that was the grant that was provided.
Right.
All they provided was grant for industrial development. And the problem is that what, it was made for coal-fired plants, nuclear plants that was upstate New York, away from everything. We're close to New York City, we need housing, we need mixed-use development. So I said, "I don't think we'll be building an Amazon warehouse on the waterfront." So, and that's why the only focus in the whole area there had the downtown. So we didn't have, we didn't have the type of development. And my argument was, what happened with a, with a municipality that wants to do some kind of mixed-use development, more commercial and stuff like that, they say, according to the grant availability, that's not allowed.
That's unfortunate.
It is very.
Could we use the capital fund, the fund, master plan?
You, if you want to transfer money to, remember we talked about the fund balance?
Right.
The money extra that we talked about the last time? You can transfer money into capital fund to fund anything you want. And we could do it that way as well.
So I know Anthony had mentioned with the, the equipment that's needed down there. So, so does Scoot have prices for like?
He gave me some prices, some items. And like I said, I can provide you, I'm waiting for some prices for traffic signals as well. I want to give you a complete five-year capital project outlook on everything and possible funding for each project. And like I said, probably early September, I'll have the financial numbers for the fiscal year that ended. And I think we'll have positive on that as well. So you might have more money that you can decide what projects you want to do. And you say your priorities at that point.
So maybe we added that capital fund too, we could, you know, with the backup.
Oh, yeah.
I hate to, I, I'm just, I'm sorry. We use our equipment for like 30, 40 years. I mean, until the poor thing, the wheels are falling off. That's, we get our money's worth out of our equipment. So, you know, we look at all the options.
Oh, absolutely.
That's all.
Yep.
All right, sounds good. Any other comments from the floor? Sorry, I get chatting here.
Hi, Lisa from First Street, Mercola. So I'm going to speak again about the AMS development. I'm really asking that we do not approve the special permit. And I'm not for a five-story building so close to our residential districts. I'm not for the increased density. And I'm asking that we stick with our codes the way they are without allowing for the increased height and increased density. And I don't think we should be setting precedent of doing exceptions and having developers come in and ask for bigger and bigger and bigger. And I'm not sure, you know, I know that people will present things, but I, I, I hope that we can just limit some of it and maybe put a little more thought towards protecting the charm and the legacy of our small, of our small village. You know, that's mostly made up of single-family homes and small apartment buildings like we have on Lewis and Bannon and Catherine Street, the townhouses, or whatever those are. And I think we're like a very special community. We're quiet, but we're close to the city of Peekskill. And we're close to various retail centers like Cortland Town Center and all of that. So we don't need to, I don't believe that we need to be so overly developed. And I think that there's plenty of residents like myself that believe the small-town charm and the quietness of our village is worth preserving and is worth even some, like value, it has a value. Just like AMS brings in tax dollars, I think keeping our small village has a value. So anyway, I sat with Marcus, I got the budget deck. I understand a little bit more about our, our budgets. But I just think, you know, we only had a 1.9% increase last year. So that is so modest. I mean, we beat inflation, we're doing great. I don't think we have to resort to these drastic things. And a five-story building, so big, yes, it's on 9A. But 9A is across the street from all of our house, like our houses. It's, you know, it's, for me, it's like three turns from my house. It's a half a mile from my house. It's, I just don't think it's the right place for it. I think, you know, we ha, I know we have a lot of variables in our budget with the cessation budget and the pilot and, but we have the Entergy land. And it's coming due in what, five, 10, 15 years? That's going to be so huge for our village. I mean, we might end up having like our own Westerly, like Austining has. Or we might have whatever, a marina, a golf course. It's going to be really exciting. But I just don't think rushing into like a five-story building right now is so smart. You can't undo a five-story building. You can't undo like all of these apartments right on that little passageway of 9A. Which I just think, I mean, I've lived in several metropolitan areas. I've lived on the west coast, the east coast. I've lived in various cities and in wealthier areas around those cities and medium areas. And what we have is just so special. I just hate to like give it away so easily. So I don't know, I spoke to a lot of my neighbors. People still don't know this is going on. And I want to just remind everybody that a public hearing was asked for. And at the public hearing, a lot of people, the people that did speak spoke against it. A few people spoke open-mindedly and said, "I know we have to consider things." Nobody spoke for it. So if you look at the public hearing people as a representative of the village people, the public hearing was very against it. So like, I just really think you should take that into account. That's what was a slice of the village. And that's what the public hearing brought to your attention, that a lot of people just think overwhelmingly that it would be negative for our village. And once again, a lot of people just don't want to come and talk against things. They don't want to, they're not public speakers like myself, with my voice cracking.
You're doing great, Lisa, you speak well.
They don't want to offend people. They don't want to go against the police or the DPW. They don't want to ask for cuts instead of development. But I mean, I just think, I've heard this word, balanced approach, balanced approach. Well, I can't understand how a building that's eight times bigger than anything we currently have in our village is balanced. To me, that seems like a huge jump from balanced. And also, I think if we currently have a 1.9% increase on this year's budget, we, we can keep doing what we're doing to some degree. I don't think we have to rush into all this development. I don't think development is a sign of success if we're going to open all these cans of worms that we don't even know what could, what it could hold. And the village is, is doing really well, even in light of all this hardship that we've come across. We increased the budgets, the, the taxes in the past, we had these increases. We've come to a better place. We have some things coming our way that are going to help us. And once again, like, I just think a balanced approach is like, maybe a little cuts, maybe manage our current budget, maybe, you know, a little development, maybe development in the right area on those 65 acres, where it's not going to be so alienating. Because like I said, the neighbors I speak to, the people I speak to, they don't think it's a good idea. So all those people are going to feel alienated by this. And if we want to, like, I think various people on the trustees said different things about, you know, doing things that make everyone kind of happy. I don't think this is the way to go. So that's just my opinion. I also just, for the numbers, what this development brings in, to me, $250,000. I mean, people that might be thinking it's going to bring in a million dollars, fine. But it's $250,000, it's going to have costs. Even the AMS developer or the spokesman from AMS that spoke on the podium a couple of times, he didn't paint the picture that the entire $250,000 would come to our bottom line. He even used the word, because I went back and watched all the meetings, he used the word, "There will definitely be a surplus for the village." So he, that's not the whole 250. So what is it, half of the 250? If the surplus is 120? That's like, what is that, $80 difference to the average taxpayer? Of like, whether it's a ta, an $80 expense or an $80 savings? That could, A, be made back in a different way? Or, you know, if it had to hit our bottom line and would represent an increase to the taxpayer, some people might think $80 is worth it. Because that, $80 is 3% of the average taxpayer, which pays two, whatever, it's in the budget deck. $3,000 is dollars or whatever. So like, I just think, I don't think it's worth it. I don't think it's the right decision. That's my opinion, and I can defend it, and it's from my heart. And I just hope we kind of like really, really consider not giving away our small-town charm so easily. It's very special, I know. And also, most people are not building these five-story buildings in little villages. I mean, I drove around and looked for five-story buildings. I saw one in like Austining or Terri, I don't, nowhere in small villages do they have such tall buildings. They have things that look a little more housy, a little more townhousey. I mean, whatever, like things like Mystic Point and things like River Club in Austining. I mean, these things are not massive buildings. It's a pretty, it's a nice building for the, for a city, like White Plains or Nourishell. It's a pretty, it's a nice building for the, for a city, like White Plains or Nourishell, or maybe that building, when we get the land opened up, you know, the 65 acres, but just not right within our little village that's already kind of congested and already, it is what it is, and let's keep it the way it is. Anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks.
You have a right to your opinion, Lisa. Bob, I just want to go back, I'm sorry, with one thing. I, I couldn't remember the word, but what happens when they release the property, it's called a site characterization. And it has to be approved by the NRC too.
Okay.
So, that's part of the process, so it just doesn't happen like right away, it's a, it's a process.
That's why I want to start it sooner, because it doesn't happen right away, it's going to take a while.
Yeah, it's going to, yeah, and then, you know, and then for them to put it up for a developer to purchase it, so yeah, it's, it's a process, yeah. Okay, anyone else, any other comments? We have a nice group here tonight, thank you everyone, definitely for coming out, you know? There's a lot going on here in the village and, you know, working on a lot of things and pretty busy. No other comments from board members, anything? So I am going to make a motion to go into executive session for personnel and potential litigation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.